All right, but I think we are good to go. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, Lonnie, just have you stand up, we'll do the oath right away. Uh, Chris? So just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I Dan Eber.
Lonnie Zalinski.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties.
And I will discharge faithfully the duties.
Of the office of mayor or council member.
The office of council member.
In the county of Dodge.
County of Dodge.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And we'll have these for you to, uh, sign here as well.
Okay, thank you. Move on to the approval of the agenda. Any deletions, additions, corrections? Dan, anything?
I have nothing.
Nope.
Tim? I do have a number two under committee reports, uh, would be planning commission update.
No? Lonnie?
Nothing.
Entertainer motion to approve the agenda as changed.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, who have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, consent agenda, things in there. Any questions for the administrator on the consent agenda? Okay, entertainer motion to approve as presented.
It's almost.
Thanks, Dwayne, who have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Lonnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. No visitors. Uh, mayors report committee appointments. There are three people being appointed back that want to continue on their commissions. That is, I think we'll do all these together. Can we do them all together? We don't have to separate, okay. Um, the planning and planning commission, Joe Fitch, his term was up, he'll do another two years there. He said he wanted to do that, thanks, Joe. Uh, park board, we agreed last time to add an additional seats. We've got Sarah Hirsch and Chris Petrie for new terms and Chuck Coleman to, uh, renew for another two years. So I will make the motion to accept those four appointments. Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Designations. I could have fun with this, but I'm not going to. Um, you see anything in there, the designations and subcommittees? Anybody have an objection to the committees they're on or would like to make a change? You can let me know. But, so I'm gonna move that we, uh, accept the designation of the subcommittees as presented.
Second.
Second, thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Committee reports, oh, I'm sorry, public forum, was there any cards?
No.
I didn't see cards, okay. Uh, committee report emergency management plan, that is in your packet. Under F1. Everybody have a chance to read through that? Thanks, everybody, for getting that together, because that was something that was, uh, I know the county kinda spearheaded that and involved the city.
Well, actually, we're kinda, you know, the, the county's doing their, right now.
Separate one.
Yeah, separate, but, uh, do wanna thank, uh, the members, um, uh, our members of the committee. They put a lot of time into it, really reviewed it a lot, and we wanna give you a chance to just take a look at this meeting, and then hopefully we'll be able to approve that, uh, later in the, the month here. I think that's our plan right now, and I know if there's any questions, um, Lonnie or Mel, both well cognizant of the situation and what's involved there, so.
No, it's very much appreciated.
Just wanted to add that Tim did a really good job bringing us various different sample plans from other communities that we could look at and base ours on, so that really gave us a good starting point, and that was incredibly helpful and very good idea.
Well, we had a lot of staff involvement, too. Um, the police and fire department are obviously involved, and Charlie's taking a good look at it, too. So one thing that will come out of this, and it was on your designations, is that eventually we will need to designate the emergency management coordinator. And in different communities or different people, it falls to the mayor initially, so that'll be, that'll be up to you, once we get going on it, whether you wanna serve in that capacity or you wanna designate someone else, so.
It does say the mayor or his designate. So, Chris, just so you can.
Yeah, no, I, I read through it very clearly, yeah. No, I read every word. No, it's much appreciated, though, after a year and a half ago when we really had no, I mean, there are plans in place, but not really anything formal or designated, so appreciate that. Uh, planning commission update.
So I just wanted to provide an update, uh, based on the, the advice of, uh, our planning commission, uh, meeting on Monday, and then the, uh, the consultant Brad from, uh, from Hoysington. Um, we had a long conversation about, um, a change to the, uh, the zoning code, which, of course, we only passed it, uh, two months ago, but seems like that's how it sort of goes sometimes, because you don't know what you're gonna deal with until you do. Um, it's primarily focused on the, the central business district and the RC district, which is sort of a, I guess, subsidiary business district, including like where Hy-Vee is and that sort of thing, so sort of somewhat outlying areas. The request would be to amend the code to allow for drive-throughs in the central business district and the RC district, which was previously allowed via conditional use permit in the prior code, all the way back to, um, as far as Linda can, can tell, nineteen ninety-six or seven or so. So when the change was made to adopt the new code, that was a use that was restricted to not be allowed anymore. There, there is no current way of doing it. Um, so I just wanted you to be aware that, um, the planning commission and their conversations seem favorable to amending that, sort of to the prior conditions, partly due to the fact that we do have, in particular, one parcel that will be directly affected by it on, on Main Street. There was some concern that, um, it reduces the walkability component of the downtown. I mean, I think what Brad indicated as best practices is that you don't necessarily wanna have drive-throughs on your Main Street, because it does sort of provide some traffic, uh, potential traffic issues. But because of the prior use, I felt comfortable with this particular site. You know, I think that each one of these conditional use permits, as they would come across, would be evaluated individually, whether it be warranted or not. So just wanted you to be aware of that, that it's, uh, it's a change that's coming, and, uh, they had a good conversation about it, I think it was very helpful. Um, so that's the update that I had. I don't know if, Dwayne, or if Lonnie, you wanted to add anything to that.
You covered it.
Yeah, I, I think the two points is whether it would be allowed based on current, on standards, or whether they needed to go through the conditional use permit. And depending on whether it was permitted by standards, uh, certainly to the developer, it's an advantage, because they don't have to go through the public hearings and everything associated with the conditional use permit. However, um, you have, on the city perspective, you have some limitations as to what conditions you would be able to put on that if you were allowing it to be permitted by standards. So there's a positives and a negatives for both, and there's a fair amount of discussion that still needs to be taken place.
Okay, thank you, any questions on that? On to old business, one, fire department tanker truck. There's two items in there.
So this is something that's, uh, been in the planning sort of for the last five years, and I'll have Joe come up to the hot seat here in a little minute, and he can talk about it a little bit more depth. But, um, the tanker trucks, we have two tanker trucks, one's a nineteen ninety-one, one's a nineteen ninety-five. And as part of an agreement that was signed with the townships that we cover approximately five years ago, they had decided to purchase a, an additional truck to replace the nineteen ninety-one, which is obviously past, uh, past its serviceable life. I mean, they're kinda keeping going with parts, but it's gotten to be difficult to replace. Um, and tankers are typically used primarily in the townships, because they don't have the water source. Um, so they're actually looking at paying for about seventy-five percent of this, and the city would be on the, on the hook for the other twenty-five percent as part of the agreement. At that time, the amount that was mentioned was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And, um, what was gonna be happening was they were gonna retrofit the chassis of the current truck. They found that not to be cost-effective. Doing research at this time, they found that it actually would cost more to do the retrofit than it would to be purchasing a more modern, um, model, in essence. And so there was a lot of conversation about whether they wanted to do a new one, which could be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or a newer used vehicle. And the townships, um, they, after long discussion, decided that they wanted to go with something that was a used but newer model, which would allow us to get on kind of a ten-year replacement track, which the goal would be there to have, you know, one tanker replaced every ten years, so that you'd have one that's new and one that's ten years old, and then at the next ten-year mark, you'd be able to replace the twenty-year model in a little bit better rotation. Right now, we've got ones that are only four years apart, so it doesn't, it's not as cost-effective for us or for them. Um, so, Joe, why don't you come up, and you could talk a bit more about it. After they researched it, they did find a, a model, which you received the information on in, in Dropbox, uh, for about a hundred and sixty thousand, which was a number that was authorized by the townships. It would increase the city's portion, um, by a certain amount, but, uh, we wanted to bring it to you just because, um, you know, I know Joe's had some questions and some thoughts about it, so go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so what, what you, uh, Tim waited out beautifully, what, what we've really kinda dealt with over the last probably two or three months with the townships, and then, and then the, the contract, um, over the last five years. Um, we had originally, uh, had a, a two thousand and eighteen, um, that we were set to, uh, approve. The, the townships were gonna approve that. We, uh, found out that the, the price on that was about thirty thousand dollars different than what we were, uh, expecting. So we immediately started looking for some other alternatives that got us a little bit closer to that hundred and sixty thousand dollar range that the, uh, uh, townships had approved in the, the preliminary meeting. So we found this, we, uh, the truck that you guys all have in front of you, um, this two thousand and sixteen Mac, there is a, a couple of things that will need to be done to this truck, um, when we get it, uh, because it is from Texas, uh, so it's not outfitted with, uh, pump heaters and, and some things like that. But those, those are minimal costs for, for us, um, with the, with the upgrade on the truck that we'll be getting. This truck in particular, a couple of differences between it and what we currently have. This truck will have a fifteen hundred gallon per minute, uh, pump versus the, uh, seven fifty that we currently have on our, on our tanker. It's also got a twenty-five hundred gallon tank versus the two thousand, um, that we have. Excuse me. Um, the, the biggest thing with this truck, the way we will set it up, it'll almost be considered as a third, uh, engine, um, because of the size of the pump that it carries. Um, the, the pump on this truck will be the same as what we have on the latter truck. So from a, from a water standpoint and a, and a usability standpoint, we will, we will definitely get, get our, our money's worth out of this. If you looked at the purchase agreement that they sent, um, this, uh, company's gonna give us eighteen thousand for our nineteen ninety-one, um, that we'll be using for, for trade-in, um, on this truck. And other than, um, you know, some minor cosmetic things and getting a radio, uh, put in it, we're, we're pretty much ready to go, uh, once it passes the pump test, so.
So those costs gonna be spread out to the townships as well?
The, which?
The improvements that you wanna make. So the base cost will be a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or around there after the trade-in, but, and that means that the city's portion would be about forty thousand dollars. Those additional costs that you have for upgrading it to, you know, for example, be usable in winter season here, those costs are gonna be built out to the townships as well at the same percentage, or what are you thinking there?
It, I think, we haven't really looked into, like, what those, what those costs will actually amount to. I, I would think if they're, if they're substantial to the point where I would be worried about my maintenance budget for the year.
Well, that's, that's what I mean, is I don't want you to use your entire maintenance budget on an item that only is tangentially related to the city itself.
Yeah, 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 if, if, if it came to that, then, then, yeah, we would, we would have to, to push some of that cost off on the townships. But, um, if it ends up to be just a, a, a minimal cost, I, I don't see that. Going through meeting after meeting to discuss the, the costs and the, you know, with, with how we would have to do that with the townships would be, would be in our, our best interest to do that, so.
Okay. Any questions for the chief? Dan?
No.
Thank you.
I believe he would be seeking, uh, action, uh, for approval on this.
Ken?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Will that pump test be done before you take it, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, the, the, the purchase would be.
Contingent on that.
Yep, would be contingent on it, it passing a pump test.
Sure.
And NFPA has specific rules for pump testing this time of year, so it's.
Sure.
I mean, it's gotta be done inside, temperature controlled. And, and they're allowing us to choose who does the testing.
Okay.
So we've got some, some groups that we work with in the cities that they're gonna take it to, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion?
I'll make that motion.
To approve?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, thanks for your work on that, everybody.
Just one other highlight with the township fire. We have, uh, reauthorized contracts with the townships for coverage. Primary townships we have, which is Canastio and, and Manorville, um, have signed their contracts, which I think you may have saw one of those already. Um, we are, we're gonna be increasing it, it's a three-year contract, we're gonna be increasing it two percent per year for those townships, so that's related to our regular costs, so.
Perfect, thank you. Transmission study, old business number two.
Uh, this is an item that was discussed, um, well, it's been discussed a number of times. I know it was discussed at the work, the planning work session we had last spring, early spring there. Um, it was completed, uh, just in December. It was one of three studies that were indicated that would be completed, but, um, due to the turnover, staff turnover, some of the direction at, uh, CNPS has maybe not been quite as thorough. But this is the first that's been completed, and having a chance to review it with you here, it, um, it indicates that right now the city of Caston is, uh, is complying on all of our transmission-related issues. Um, however, it also shows that, um, if we have the opportunity to take part in a transmission project, it would be financially beneficial for the utility and the community as well. Um, we have identified a few potential projects in that regard, some transmission projects, um, that would be, uh, very beneficial to the utility and its, uh, potential, uh, return on investment. So, um, we'll continue to follow up on that, and, um, if there's any questions anyone has, I'd be glad to answer those at this time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nope.
Questions? Okay, new business, snow emergency policy, H1.
Talking with the, uh, public works director, now, obviously, this year so far, we've been fortunate, I think, uh, to have a pretty mild, uh, winter. Um, you know, who knows what tomorrow brings, and it's, uh, you know, we may get a little bit bigger chunk here Thursday and through Friday. But, um, we had that conversation, and one of the issues that he's run into, and I know the police perhaps have as well to a certain extent, is that, uh, we have folks parking on the street in areas that need to be plowed out, and so it creates a lot of additional work. So, um, I talked to him, I asked him, I said, you know, does the city have a snow plowing ice control policy of some nature? And there, there have been things they've talked about over the last couple of years, but they haven't ever, um, really put it down on paper. And that includes, I think Linda's gonna bring that up, um, some, some snowplow routes, in essence. Um, what we're not looking at is, we're not looking at, uh, towing vehicles from all the city streets, because obviously that's not cost-effective or prudent. But we would be looking at potentially, um, a little bit more enforcement on areas where there are emergency routes, where, you know, you have ambulance, uh, fire service, that sort of thing, which would be, um, you know, necessities to try and, uh, move through as, with our plowing in a prudent way. Not looking for anything definitive tonight or even this, this winter. You know, we would probably take this and make it an effect probably in the, the next cycle. Uh, but some of the components would enable us to declare, for example, a snow emergency. And typically, what I've seen with those, and you may be familiar with them in other communities, it might actually be the day after the snowfall, where the city would put out, you know, it's a snow emergency, you know, at twelve, you know, twelve midnight, uh, you need to have your, your, your cars off the street, otherwise there'd be ticketing or something like that. Now it'd allow the, the public works department to go back and clear those areas out. A lot of other communities, um, utilize that. So it's for you to take a look at, and, uh, you know, it's, uh, just got some basic things in there. These are some of the routes you've got on the screen up, up front here. You can sort of see, the primary routes we'd be looking at are, um, Main Street, and then the, the large north, uh, rather, east-west crossing streets. Uh, so you've got, you can see those kind of in blue. Those would be ones that would be primary routes that we would look to try and, and some of them, for example, Sixteenth Street, there's, you know, basically no parking anyways, um, so there wouldn't be a lot of impact to residents in any way. But, um, I know Charlie's been taking a look at that and making sure that, um, he's, uh, able to manage this, uh, issue as much as he can. So that's what it is, that's why it's there, just something we wanted to, uh, to bring to you and so that you can read through. And if there's changes you wanna see, then, uh, absolutely, those are gonna be able to be implemented.
And there are four copies of that, and the, uh, they're all the same. I was, I was trying to look at them, like, so don't study them.
Linda and I were attempting to get to go into Dropbox, and, uh, with the new turnover, we, uh, we did get, they're, they're in there, though.
So just, they're in there, I spent a lot of time trying to figure it out.
They look the same.
Trying to figure out the difference.
Yeah, don't worry about that too much, but, uh, but, yeah, so that is kinda where we're at. So I don't know if there's any questions on that tonight, but.
Just need to know what the key is.
And the key is down at the, I can't do this left.
Can you scroll down?
Farm right shows whose route is what on the roadmap.
Yeah, those are just, uh, the, the, in the key, actually, you can ignore the key, it just shows whose routes they are. But, um, that is, I mean, they're the snow emergency routes, and we're looking at prioritizing those ones in the light blue.
The light blue and.
Yeah.
And Main Street.
And Main Street. So those are the ones that, that Charlie thought were the most essential. And also, you know, we just, we ran into an issue with, especially Main Street, when there's vehicles there, it's, you know, it's impossible for them to get snow moving in a prudent way. And then what ends up happening is folks clear the sidewalk, and then it gets pushed on the street again. So it even kinda exacerbates the, you know, and we do have ice. You know, if people are walking around in town, that's probably one of the main areas they walk around. For all the businesses down there, we wanna try and eliminate that ice as much as possible. Especially for our LD residents. Any questions out there, Ms. Mary?
This last snowstorm, they normally come and do Fifth Avenue, but they were doing the avenues first.
You mean streets?
Or streets first, not the avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that's gonna?
Well, I don't know, I can't speak to specifics. I do know we have some new drivers, and, um, I know Charlie has been trying to, um, get them into the mode of it by doing things a little bit differently, and maybe has changed a few things in terms of how he's reassigned it. I don't know if that'll continue to be the case, or if it's just something they, this last snowfall we had was, uh, was a good snowfall, because it wasn't overly heavy, and it allowed some newer drivers some practice time in the cab, and so they may have been looking at some of those options, I don't know. Brandon, you haven't heard anything on that, have you?
Yeah, I know they were tweaking some of the mounting stuff, so.
Yeah. Right.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, number two, under new business, two thousand and twenty-one liquor license fee. I had asked the administrator, others, the agenda. I know we have visited a couple of times last year when everybody got shut down, people with liquor licenses got shut down. We, so we weren't gonna do any refunds, that type of thing for two thousand and twenty, but we'd address it in two thousand and twenty-one. So I would just like to get everybody's opinion on it. Um, I mean, basically, for the better part of eight to nine months, they haven't been able to operate at all or partially, and they paid for their full fee for two thousand and twenty. I think the right thing to do would be to waive the fee for two thousand and twenty-one, because even though they're back open, it's still limited or a percentage, so, um, I don't think that's gonna be a huge blow to our budget as far as that goes, but, so I don't know how everybody feels about that, or what we would have to do, but.
I know I did talk to, uh, Jan, because she handles most of that permitting. And she indicated that the, the most, uh, I suppose easiest is not the right word, but the, the best way to do it would be actually to have people pay their regular fee and then to refund that to them. And I, she said it has to do with the state licensing.
Why not charge them a dollar?
What's that?
Why not charge them a dollar and be done with it?
Well, I think part of it would be because our fee schedule is set with those fees in it.
Okay.
You know, and, you know, whatever the fee is, you know, two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars, you know, unless we wanna change the fee schedule.
Oh.
That was kinda what she thought was, well, you're charging the fee, if the council would choose to rebate that fee to them, or rebate fifty percent or twenty, whatever, you know, whatever you decide to do, it just makes it a cleaner process for her.
Okay.
As opposed to, we're not gonna charge them at all, and, I mean, partly, it would become, you know, I, and I, I don't have a preference. That was what she indicated to me, was simpler process for her. It amounts to the same thing.
Yep.
You know, they're gonna give us a check, we're gonna file it all to the state, and we're gonna say, the fee was paid, you know, that's done, and then we can rebate that to them.
Sure.
That would be, uh, up to the council. I, I, you know, I don't have a, a huge feeling one way or the other.
If it's gonna create confusion or something, let's do it that way. Let's collect the fee and rebate it right back to them.
We don't wanna confuse the state.
Well, and I, I'd be honest with you, that's part of it, though, because I know that things with the state have been taking longer. And I think if they see something that looks weird, they're gonna be a call. I mean, she's gonna get a phone call from somebody like at, at age, they're gonna go, well, what happened? And I don't know. Nancy, do you know off the top of your head what the income off of the liquor license, what kinda number we're looking at?
No, not right off, I thought it was like twenty-five hundred or thirty.
I can see if I can find that in our revenue here quick, just so we know what your actual amount is.
Total, because it's about five hundred a license plus about two hundred for Sundays. And we have about four or five of them.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, one question would be, so I know we have a new permit this year for someone who was not in operation last year. So are we waiving that even though they were not impacted last, you know, they weren't impacted last year? You know, we have a, a small brewer that's, you know, gonna be operating here in the next, if they're not already operating.
I guess.
They're not yet, because they have to come to council.
Sure, so that, that permit will be coming for a public hearing, right. That would be, my question is, so, I mean, to me, I think we would, we would apply this to the people that paid in two thousand and twenty.
Yes.
Not necessarily to, if a new bar were open today, I mean, I mean, unless that's not the feeling of the council.
That's not fair. I mean, if, if they had to endure this last year, they're the ones that should be rebated.
Right.
If somebody new comes in, they're in operation from day one.
So is it a new on-sale, where they can actually consume alcohol at this brewery?
Yes.
Okay.
One exception is, um, new El Patron, they've been in business for a couple of months, but.
That'd be another good one, thanks for bringing that up.
I don't know if that's a consideration at all, because they paid their license for this year.
I mean, I guess the, the ones that I'm thinking of, obviously, events, um, on Main Street Pete's, those two would have been, uh, the Legion probably is, is applicable to them. You know, the other ones, I don't, you know, and I just want the clarification, because as I said, it's not a, it's not a problem. We just wanna make sure as staff, we know what you guys want to do.
Even though you can open today, you're still twenty-five or fifty percent capacity, which means you're still behind the eight ball a little bit there, as far as eating and dining indoors. And most restaurants and bars have a tough time at a hundred percent capacity when everybody's going out, let alone twenty-five or fifty percent capacity. So whether they were in business last year or not, I don't know.
The only thing I fear is, on the other hand, somebody still, even if June, everybody opens up a hundred percent, you still might have that business that, hey, I had a rough year, you let me by last year. You know, can you give me a break for the following year, because it was tough for us.
I think if we're gonna do it, my opinion is if, if we would waive liquor license fees for on-sale for two thousand and twenty-one, for anybody, rather than pick and choose who gets it and who doesn't, because then you gotta have the rationale, why'd you do it? Well, you were in business last year, not, well, we didn't refund last year's fee, we refunded two thousand and twenty-one's fee.
So let's just say that due to the COVID, we're, we're suspending liquor fees for twenty-one, but don't say, because everybody had a tough year last year, because then you open it up.
Right, it's a one-year thing.
Yes.
And you have to pay it, then we'll refund it right back.
Okay, perfect.
Because that's, keeps the state happy.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it.
Okay. So that's my opinion, like, Dwayne, anything?
Uh, there's so many different scenarios to try to rationalize. I, I think collecting the fee and rebating based on, you know, what they paid last year, I think is reasonable.
Dan, anything? No, anything? Okay, so I'll make the motion to not charge the liquor fee for two thousand and twenty-one.
To charge and then re.
Well, to charge it.
Rebate the liquor.
All right, I, I take that back, rewind. I'll make a motion to rebate the liquor license fees for the on-sale establishments in two thousand and twenty-one as a one-time thing.
And so what I, well.
Who have a second?
Sorry, go ahead.
I'll second it.
So any other discussion or questions?
Well, what I will, what the process I would have during discussion.
All in favor, say aye, oh, okay.
We're discussing it.
Okay, all right.
I would just say, the process I would have is we'll inform the businesses, so that they know to still continue to pay, because I know I had one question from one of the businesses in town, they said, are you guys gonna do anything? And I said, well, we're talking about it tonight. So I will notify them, uh, of the process, they still need to pay, and then we'll be rebating them, and that'll hopefully satisfy. Any questions?
Do we wanna add down there, due to COVID, or it just doesn't matter?
I think that's implied.
Okay. Just for future.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Administrator's report.
Sure. Uh, you've got the report there, and you can see there are a number of items in there, and we'll talk about a few more of those tonight on the personnel side. Uh, just wanted to highlight a couple of things. I know Brandon will be talking about the LRIP program a little bit later. Um, we did receive a number of applications, I believe it was nine, the last I was told for the, uh, the sewer wastewater operator licensing.
I think we've gotten 11 now.
11? Okay, well, that's great. So that job has closed, so we'll be starting a review of those positions, and, uh, we'll have more information for, uh, for the council at a future meeting. Um, CMPS, I did have a meeting, uh, actually yesterday in Rochester. We, we reviewed a number of applications for that. We brought the number down from 20 to six, so there are a number that will be going forward, um, doing some interviews with those folks at the end of the month here. Uh, you've got the EMS plan there. Um, I know a couple of things that, um, Linda's brought to my attention, is we do have some, um, some interesting unemployment requests that we've had been dealing with, uh, so folks that we wouldn't necessarily see unemployment, uh, you know, benefit requests from, the state's basically been saying, well, go ahead and apply. So we've been dealing with that at a staff level, and it's been kind of interesting. Um, and then I have a couple of other items under my report there, just to talk briefly about, but are there any questions about that first?
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so the next item would be the lawn sign memo that's included in there, and I know I've talked, uh, with council members about this already. Just, uh, something administratively, we, uh, had a conversation with our, uh, city attorney in response to some resident questions about those, and I think that a lot of that's sort of starting to go away as it naturally does after a while. But I think, um, the city attorney advised me that, uh, removing some of that language in the code would allow us to, uh, to fit the needs that we have, uh, without doing a dramatic change to the code. Is that correct, Noni?
Uh, yes. Um, that part, that in 2016, the Supreme Court essentially said, you can't include language like that. It's unconstitutional because it's, um, regulating based on content of the speech. Um, I think we could, we just need to remove that from the ordinance.
We'll be planning on bringing a revised, uh, section for you guys to, uh, take a look at in the, in the future here.
But we are still going to leave the part about too close to the street, blocking, blocking traffic vehicles.
Absolutely. No safety, uh, no safety changes, only the, the, the speech aspect of it will be, will be removed, so. And then the other item I've got there is, um, update on the natural gas franchise fee, which the council approved last fall. Um, it is, uh, taking effect. Um, and after talking it over with the, um, the utility, um, and, uh, kind of thinking it through, we're actually gonna have that start taking effect in March, which actually lines up well for hopefully a, a warming cycle, which should moderate the cost to, uh, customers, which, uh, we think would be a benefit. Um, so you can read through the language. Um, the nice thing is, is it's gonna list on there as a franchise fee, which is a positive. I know that Nancy had some concerns about sometimes utilities try to put it in there as a tax. It's not intended to be that, but, uh, so you've got that there, and moving forward, we'll expect to collect revenue, and I think 2021 will give us a good baseline for, you know, nine months of the year, we'll have an idea of what that should generate in the future. You know, that'll allow us to plan if we need to use those revenues for some special projects as, that were previously identified by the council, so. And I think that's all I've got.
Yep. Thank you very much. Engineers' report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, two quick ones tonight. Uh, there's two requests for council actions on your council packet. I'll quickly go through those and answer any questions you may have. Uh, the first one is regarding 16th Street Northwest extension and a possible funding application. Uh, quick background on this, the city completed a feasibility report for Roundabout and extending 16th Street, uh, from Highway 57 out to CASA 21. Uh, we secured some funding. Uh, Doyen and myself presented to Mindot and a group there, uh, secured some funding through the Mindot LPP, uh, partnership program for, uh, the Roundabout itself. That did not include the extension of 16th Street to the west, so we haven't necessarily identified a funding opportunity for the extension of 16 from the Roundabout over to the Dump Road. Uh, we did look at municipal state aid. Uh, dollars can be used for that portion of the project. Um, there isn't gonna be enough in our municipal stated bank, uh, that keeps growing every year. Uh, we were looking at borrowing ahead. Uh, Mindot's, uh, currently stopped that borrowing ahead process. Uh, we're thinking that that's gonna right the ship, uh, in the coming years, we'll have that available to us, uh, but we still may be short. So the question tonight is, uh, we do have a possibility of applying for some, um, LRIP or LRIP, uh, funding. This funding is what we secured for 16th Street East, uh, the paving of the old township road going out to Dodge 15. Uh, we secured that, uh, funding from this program. Um, this program's back in front of us through the local bonding bill. There's $75 million that's up, kind of up for grabs, if you will, between counties, cities, and townships in the state of Minnesota. Uh, so that's more than what it's been in the past, so it's kind of a little attractive program or opportunity here, uh, based on that amount of money. Uh, most of the heavy lifting's been done. We already have the feasibility report out, hey, add the cost in front of us. We've already actually started some of the engineering for the Roundabout, uh, kind of a holding pattern again for the extension of 16th Street, but we're planning on ultimately building that. That's been a, a goal from the cities, from the comprehensive planning process, from our capital improvement planning process, so. The more that we may be able to put into that pot to get funded, I think is in the city's best interest, so. Uh, why this application, uh, may not be, uh, successful, we've got a fair amount of money through different programs. Some of the projects described in addition to the Safe Routes to School, we'll talk about in a bit, Highway 57, so that's been kind of a ding on the city when, uh, Mindot and the, the folks and engineers and, uh, fellow cities look at the city of Cassin. We've secured a fair amount of funding, so that may, may come up, but again, there's a lot of money on the table and a good opportunity here. Um, so if you direct staff to proceed with the application, I'm expecting this to be one to $1.25 million ask. Uh, that section of 16th Street's, you know, gonna be pretty expensive, it's gonna be a heavy-duty road, if you will, going across there. Um, and again, we would likely supplement that with municipal state aid money, working with the local developer there, and ultimately get it built in some timeline. Um, I'm thinking it'd be like a 2023 project, potentially 2022 at the Roundabout, but we got a lot of irons already in the fire in that timeline, so, uh, we'll see how that kind of works out, so. Um, any questions, comments? Again, we're asking for a distraction, moving forward this application. If you provide us the direction to move forward, Tim and myself and public works staff will get the application together, getting heavy liftings done. We've already done on the last phase, um, likely bringing resolutions to the city, to the county, to the school, uh, potentially letters of recommendation from, uh, the police and fire and whatnot, uh, to support this application, so. That's what the work we're looking at, doing to get the application together, so. It's due, I think, March, so we need to kind of get some direction here to move forward, so.
Let's do it.
Can't, can't hurt. I'm going to approve, having you go ahead with the application process. All right. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Dan, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number two.
All right, thank you. Second item, Safe Routes to School project schedule. Uh, we've been kind of shifting some projects around here, so, uh, working with city staff and kind of reviewing what projects we have, uh, moving forward. Um, questioning if we wanna, recommending ultimately if we wanna tweak the Safe Routes to School project schedule slightly. Uh, quick background, this is the funding you received for kind of the trails around the school, uh, kind of on the backside of the, uh, intermediate school. Um, some of the trail for the 16th Street extension we just, uh, discussed, um, and then also including kind of on the north side of Houston's to Tyne or 57 project to get that trail extended, so that's what the Safe Routes to School project is. Uh, we currently have that, um, planned for 22 construction. Uh, the funds technically, uh, on the Mindot side of things aren't gonna be available till October 21, that's why we're planning 22 construction. The city has the option to construct ahead, get reimbursed later. This is about a $375,000 project, so that's what we're looking at if we constructed it this construction season. Um, kind of riding that $375,000 kind of through the summer, with the idea that we'd be ending construction about the same time that the funds would be available. Um, so that's, um, ins and outs of that project. We also have the Northwest Trail project. We'd be likely kind of tying these two projects together. Uh, that's a lot smaller project, so we need to get some economy of scale associated with tying the two projects together. They're very similar in construction, both trail projects. Um, in addition to that, with moving, or having the Roundabout construction in 2022, we're gonna see a lot of traffic on 16th Street and rerouting traffic to Fifth Avenue, and that's, uh, in the project's scope of the Safe Routes to School. So if we can get in there and get this built this construction season, we can get that contractor out of there while along, and the 16th Street Roundabout contractor comes in in 2022, so. It's a little bit of a, advantage there from a traffic impact, so, uh, we talked to the staff, uh, Public Works, myself, and I think the administration's on board tweaking this, scheduled to move it up to 21 construction. Did talk to the school, they were also in support of it, so, looking for discussion and, uh, ultimately a recommendation.
How safe is the funding for Safe Routes to School if we front it, and then October comes, they say, shucks, we're out of money?
Uh, it comes from, all the way from the federal soul. It's, um, indexed, so it's encumbered, so I don't, I've never seen a encumbered fund project in the shorter timeline go away.
All right.
I can confirm that's maybe it would be a conditional approval that is encumbered, so.
What kind of cost savings are you expecting?
Uh, it's hard to tell. I, I just think, the more cost savings we potentially on the Northwest Trail, I mean, it's a 70, 80,000 dollar construction cost, so I'd like to kind of tie these two together. We truly won't actually tie them together, because this is federal money, so it's just gonna mess up the, the project. We're gonna have to go backwards and do more engineering, so we're not gonna do that, but I think we bid them out at the same time. Get one contractor, a little more efficient on our side of things, um, dealing with contractors to get two projects built, uh, and again, they're similar. Um, so I think it's, it's in our best interest to do it, and it's kind of hard to say. We don't know what the bidding environment's looking like for next spring. We think it's gonna be still pretty solid. Um, 2022 maybe be a little different, I think it's gonna be more attractive on slowing down, but I think we're gonna see the economy scale by getting them together, so, but it's hard to quantify though. And again, we are, already have kind of the heavy lifting done for that. We got the plans, or, you know, getting wrapped up and going to review, so.
Where would the upfront funds come from?
Well, obviously that'd be a conversation we'd have, but I think what we'd end up looking at is, um, you know, there, if you look at the income statement actually in your packet, you can kind of see that already. Uh, let's see here, what page is that on? Towards the end of the packet, you've got the income statement, and it does show a line item for the Safe Routes to School, which is negative fund balance. So I think in the short term, you'd have a negative fund balance in that fund, and then that would be repaid, uh, in essence, the general fund would be funding the money, um, and then as that would be repaid by the, by the, the federal government or the state, whoever is issuing that. Um, we'll have all the paid invoices and things like that, and my experience with Safe Routes to Schools has been as long as you have the paid invoices, it's not, it's not very difficult. I mean, the money is encumbered, as, as long as it's there. That's the biggest thing, and you know, the federal government, your, your knowledge of the future there is as good as mine is in terms of the reliability, but I think that would be what would end up happening. I don't know, Nancy, do you have any other feedback on that?
No, I mean, we've done that with several projects, is, you know, to get them started, and then the funding comes later, especially with grants, so. But it sounds like it would all get done in the next year anyway, so the funds that we set aside that we budgeted, we would transfer over. One of the projects actually got started, and then there's, um, that amount the school has committed to pay too.
Okay. Thank you. Dan, anything?
No.
No, anything? Mike?
No.
Okay. Honored to entertain a motion?
I'd, I'd make a motion that we would move forward and do it in 2021.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Uh, personnel item K1, the, it's like Groundhog's Day. Excuse me. Um, we have firefighter Sharon's resignation, uh, for retirement, um, so, we'll thank him for his service again, and, uh, I'll make a motion to accept his retirement.
I'll second it.
Any other questions? All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, tell Steve congratulations again.
Again.
Um, okay, we're gonna go to a close, so this is personnel, so it will not be recorded? Is that correct?
That's right.
Personnel.
No, I wouldn't say it's misconduct.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could record it, I mean. Oh, okay, it's not.
Turn it off. Give it a second before you turn it back on.
Okay. So we will be recording that, it's a personnel issue, and we'll open a meeting after we're done, so we're gonna close the meeting temporarily here, so.
We do have, if you'd like to stay, there's the overflow room here for folks that are gonna be waiting us out, if you'd like to, but who knows how long it's gonna take.
Turn it off.
Turn it off. Give it a second so you have a break.